We are going to call the regular Board of Selectmen meeting for November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five at five thirty P M. to order at five thirty three P M. At the table is Selectman Jim Lampos and First Select Woman Martha Shoemaker. Our Select Woman Jude Reed could not be with us this evening, but we do have a forum, so we're going to proceed. Information items, communications and correspondence. I do have two pieces of correspondence that I want to go over. And the first one is really happy, happy news that we were called today that Governor Lamont and Commissioner Ukulito have announced the seventh round of Community Connectivity Grant Program Awards. And we are pleased that we are the recipients, the town of Old Lime, to receive eight hundred thousand for the Hall's Road Sidewalk Project. So we are very excited about that. And they said that the CCGP Program Manager will be contacting us soon with the official award letter and to let us know what our next steps are. So we'll get to get to work on that. I also received notification last week that Select Woman Jude Reed had been working with DEEP to review their their DEEP, I'm sorry, DEEP's hunting review team. And they conducted an assessment of the Black Hall River and provided us with a report. Basically, in August of this year, they conducted a hunting review team assessment of the section of the Black Hall River and Old Line between the Mile Creek Road Bridge, northern boundary and the Amtrak Railline southern boundary in response to some homeowner concerns about waterfall bow hunting in the river section. Prior to two thousand and twenty five, we'd had no formal complaints, but we did have a couple of residents concerned last year. I believe the hunting season is for ducks is pretty short-lived. I think it's two to three weeks on that section of the river. So meanwhile, they have done a temporary closure for that. Jim, you mentioned to me when you saw this that you saw something that others can weigh in. I could not find anything.
Well, I noticed there was a temporary closure and I just wanted to communicate to hunters that it was not the Board of Selectmen that did this. I had a concern about closing portions of the river to hunting because it is a short season and it's very few places where you can do it as a traditional part of Old Lime culture. So I thought we're going to have a discussion in the Board of Selectmen in an ordinance, you know, in dealing with an ordinance. But DEEP has sort of taken this into, you know, they've handled it. And I just wanted to make sure that there's any hunting incidents out there. And I know there's a few. I've talked to a few people in town. I've tried to not make a huge issue out of this. But to let people know that there is a temporary closure. And if they object, they really should contact DEEP at this point before that becomes permanent.
And we will put this information on the website so that everyone will be able to see the temporary closure and that will be up tomorrow sometime. So Katie will have that on it as part of a spotlight so that people will be able to find it easily. Did you have any other information or correspondence communication that you want to share?
I don't have anything that's that was specifically a correspondence. People have asked questions about various things, but.
Okay. All right. So our next item on is approval of the minutes October twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. Can I have a motion to accept, Jim?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of October twentieth, two thousand and twenty five.
I will second any any discussion.
It looked fine to me.
I thought so too. Thank you, Chen, for doing such a great job. So we'll call for a vote, all those to accept the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen meeting for October twentieth. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'm not going to go through all the others because there's no one else here to do anything else. Okay, so we have two presentations tonight. I'm sorry, public comment. Sorry, I jumped right through. Public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to offer public comment? None? Anyone online that would like to offer public comment? Okay. No public comment. Before I begin though, I do see that Mark Hastings in here is here. So, Mark, I know you want to present some new numbers, I believe to us. So Jim, can we make an amendment and add Mark Hastings and the Rogers Lake Authority doc to X? I'm sorry. It's A B C. This was misnumbered. It's G under, well, I'm gonna put a C under Old Business because we have heard it before. So can you make a motion to add Rogers Lake Authority to doc to C under Old Business?
I'll make a motion to add Rogers Lake Authority in the doc under C or eight C Old Business.
Thank you. I'll second any discussion. Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor of adding the Rogers Lake Doc proposal to Old Business. Let her see. Please signify by saying. Oh, we do. Sorry. I looked in under New Business. Sorry. Never mind. We already have that. Scratch that. I was just too excited about the eight hundred thousand dollars.
I am totally.
Sorry. Okay, so we have guests tonight from River Valley Transit. We have Brendan Garrity and Tim Griswold, who is our Town Representative to River Valley Transit to do a presentation for us because we are going to have some new bus stops in town. So Brendan, would you and Tim like to come? And Brendan, Katie has your presentation up. So she's gonna, Katie, if you'll share that your screen and then everybody in the room will be able to see that. Yep, that's why you sent it so that we would.
Sure, right in the center. Yeah, okay, sounds good. Right.
Or you could just sit right there.
Sure, okay.
You've got a mic.
Got a mic there. Okay.
This is an intro. Brendan with the River Valley Transit, also known as Estre Transit District. He has been doing a Herculean job working with a a number of communities, probably seventeen communities, to get rid of these flag stops, so-called. So when people want to get on the bus, they basically they wave for the bus to stop. So it's been a process of making sure that we'll have signage for bus stops and that they will be in a place that is safe as well as possible. And some of them have bus stops, such as our One and Sound View. So
Yeah, John.
It's involving something like seven hundred and thirty signs throughout the network, isn't it?
Eight hundred and thirty-three, close.
All right. So it's it's quite a project and a contractor will be installing the signs. But Brendan has been working very closely with all communities and so we're want to talk about the signs on town roads as well as the state roads, which of course would be the jurisdiction of DOT. So Brendan.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. Thank you much for the introduction, Tim. I really appreciate it. So yeah, we're here today. I'll just briefly go over our plans for our bus stop installation and opportunities for feedback from the town. I also would just do a brief overview of our current services, just so folks in the room are a little bit aware of what we do. But I'll go quickly on that to make sure we're in the interest of time. So on the next slide here, we have on the agenda there.
Martha, I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing it. We're fine. You're sharing your screen. If you maybe you go from beginning up in your corner where it says from beginning.
Yeah, no, I'm wondering if somebody online can tell me if they're able to see it as well.
Anita, can you see the presentation upstairs? Anita? It's a banner, Jay, for technology.
Always happens.
Yes, Anita's waving her hand, so she must be somewhat, or she wants to talk, I guess, or I'm not sure.
I called her and she's got it. Okay, thanks, Anita. Yep. All right, my apologies for the delay.
Sorry. So if you can flip to the next side slide, Katie.
Did it go?
No, you need to just go, if you go into there you go, there you go. But Katie, you can, if you get out, you don't have to have the notes. It's all right.
That's okay. We can, you know.
We'll look through, but you don't need to. That's all right. We're good.
Yeah, we should be good to go. All right. So yeah, so I appreciate that and.
You want to go to the next slide, Katie? Great.
Awesome. Yes, we'll do a brief introduction, talk about our Old Lime services and then go into the bus stop project here. So we can go to the next slide here. That's all right.
Next slide, Kate.
I'm just trying to get the thing off.
It's because it's in note mode versus it's slideshow.
Our point can be tricky sometimes.
There you go. Just a little stop there for a sec. Is that what you want it?
Yeah, that's great.
All right, so go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so just Brendan Garrity out of Transportation Plan for River Valley Transit. I appreciate what I think Tim gave you a good introduction here. And so we can go to the next slide if that's all right. Awesome. So so this is who we are, right? So you might be more familiar with Nine Town Transit. You might even see some Nine Town Transit signs around town. In two thousand and twenty-two, Nine Town Transit and Middletown Transit merged together to create Middle, uh, Ruralized Transit, excuse me, which is one system for all of Millsix County and beyond. So it was a lot of advantages of going up in scale, more vehicles, more drivers, that kind of thing. And so we are now the new branding, but most of the vehicles have changed over with new branding. And so you might be seeing us drive around town in our in our vehicles there. So that this is who we are. And we can go to the next slide here where I'll talk a little bit more about our current services. Great. So we operate today thirteen fixed route buses. So that's thirteen traditional bus routes you may think of. Like I said, we predominantly serve from Millsix County, but we also have connections as far as New London, which the route that goes through in Old Lime. Meriden, we also transfer with other services that go as far as New Haven, Hartford and other locations, New Britain. So we cover a large area. I'll show a map in just a second, which you'll see. We also provide dial-a-ride service, ADA paratransit service for our riders who can't use our traditional fixed route bus due to physical or cognitive conditions, as well as our extra on-demand servers, which is also a favorite of mine as well. And I'll go to the next slide here. We can we can see a map. I'd like to show the map, just give you an overview, that little star on the bottom there is where we are today. So just to show the scale of our system and we do cover a good portion of the state, to be honest with you. And we have two, three, about three hubs, one in Middletown, one in Old Saybrook and one in Mass, and where multiple routes meet together. And you're part of the Old Saybrook hub that's in the train station and goes all as far as New London for your route. Go to the next slide here. I apologize, this is a typo. So it's old line, of course, and the routes are Route forty-six, forty-three, Old Saybrook and New London, which is the route from, it starts in Old Saybrook, is predominantly an old lime route and then goes to a short little bit in East Lime and then to New London, but the majority of the actual mileage is inside Old Lime. And then the Tax Voucher Program, which is a program that offers reduced taxes for seniors.
But that starts at the
Old Saybrook train station. You got it. Absolutely. But you can catch it anywhere you like in Old Lime. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, all along the route. Go to the next slide there.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. Yes.
About how frequently do they leave the train station?
Great question. So our routes here, as you can see, they run, this particular route runs every two hours. So they're very, they're fairly infrequent. There are several routes in our shoreline area that run every two hours. So the six forty-four that goes from Middletown to Old Saybrook. This this route here, the six forty-two that goes from Essex, Chesapeake River to Old Saybrook all run every two hours, as well as the one from Madison and Middletown also run every two hours. You know, in the future, we'd love to increase the frequency and we kind of go for more of a coverage model because even though we cover a lot of the state, the funding we get is is relatively minuscule. We'd rather have good coverage than just really good service for a few routes, if that makes sense. So we try to go for a coverage model. And frankly, you know, this is one of the routes that might not be possible if we decided to go more just numbers, frequency based. We'd like to have a good coverage to make sure at least there's an option for someone there. So that this is one of the one of the limitations of our service, but we do still have people use it every month and and we have some pretty decent ridership on this on this.
So Brendan,
Yes.
You got on in Saybrook
Yes.
And you rode all the way to New London.
You did.
When you turn around, you're gonna go right back on the same route.
Exact same route.
Okay.
Yeah, so we call that bidirectional, which means that if you depending on what side of the street you're waiting for the bus on, and that's why you'll see usually two bus stops near each other, one on one side of the street, one on the other. Because you might want to go eastbound one day and you might want to go westbound the other day. So you might want to head towards New London or you might want to head towards Old Saybrook in either direction. So that's that's going to be key for there. And nice with this route, even though it is unfortunately not very frequent, it does connect to major transportation hubs. You go to New London where you have ferry, train and other bus services. Or you go to Old Saybrook and same thing, you have bus services and of course Amtrak in both locations. So we do see people who will actually use it for some work as well, believe it or not. Some folks will take it to work in either direction, which is which is interesting. So, but yeah, definitely is a limited service, but pretty good, decent ridership for what for what it is, for the level of service. But ideally, one day, we'd like to, you know, increase it to an hour if possible.
Is there any talk about perhaps in the summer adding weekend service?
Yeah, so that's a great point. In fact, this route is honestly one of our last routes that doesn't have some weekend service. So it is. You definitely on the the shortlist of priorities, it would be a Saturday service for us as well.
Because of the Soundview Transit Hub, the weekend, obviously late June through July is
A lot of traffic.
Yeah, have no parking down there. So if we could offer people the option of, because this goes by a couple of parking runs.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, park the park and ride, or if you're coming from any place on the route.
Help reduce traffic. So absolutely, that's definitely on the lookout for, we're always looking for additional funds and whenever they appear, we definitely apply. So we can go to the next next slide here. So another good service you guys have in town is dial-a-ride. So this is kind of right. So you saw our bus route that goes along Lime Street and along some other state roads, but if you don't happen, you know, you don't happen to live near that route, you know, if you're a mile or longer away from that route, you don't want to walk that, which makes sense. We have this search dial-a-ride, which is a advanced reservation service that fills those gaps. This is available for anybody in town and there's no restriction on where it can be picked up. So it's anywhere, as long as it's in the town boundary. And it is advanced reservation, though. So you do have to book it in advance. You can book up to two weeks in advance or at least a day before notice. So like four P M. the day before in order to book that ride. It also is, it is first come, first served. So sometimes certain times can fill up, it's a certain type of day. So if you know, we always recommend if someone has an important appointment, maybe it's a doctor's appointment or something like that. We always let them know that they should book in advance as soon as they know, so they can make sure they get they get that time. But there's no application required. This it's not like our ADA paratransit where there's like eligibility. I can use this. Everybody here in this room can use it. There's no restriction. It's not just a medical service. You can use it to go to the movies. You can use it to, you know, go wherever you want to go. There's no there's no restrictions on that. It's wheelchair accessible as well. And we can go to the next slide if that's all right. Doesn't say it here, but the price is three fifty-one way, seven dollar round trip, so three fifty-one way. There also is a donation only option available for seniors. So we get an excellent grant through Senior Resources group who we work closely with, and there actually is a bit of an application process, but you can get a donation-only ride, meaning that no matter what you have available, we will let you on the bus, even if it's nothing. So it's not a free ride technically, but we will never turn anybody away from that ride, if that makes sense. So we just, we ask folks to pay half, but if they can't, we still take for those seniors. Those are the hours of operation. It's a Monday through Friday type service and it's first, first come, first served. The last thing I quickly mentioned is there is a subscription service available for medical employment or education trips. So if someone is using it for one of those services, a great example is dialysis. If I have dialysis three times a week, instead of asking the person to call in every single time to book every single appointment, if you have a set dialysis schedule, we'll just come by and pick you up every single time. Sorry. So if for those certain conditions, if it's a school trip, a medical trip or an employment trip, we can't, if there if there's room, we can try and book a subscription service that will just always come automatically until you tell us to stop. And that's to, you know, make it easier for folks who have those types of appointments. But it's just just for those restrictions and we can go to the next one. I want to.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, it's it's a good program. Yep. And then finally, I like to mention this less of a service we run and more a partnership we have with a provider who does the, it's not current anymore. We have a new provider who's even even better, but this is a tax voucher program. So basically, you know, we know we cover a decent portion of our state, but if you want to go to you know, New Haven or Stanford, somewhere far away that we just can't get you to, we have this option for folks with disabilities or seniors over sixty, we'll basically pay for half a tax ride. You basically, how the program works is very simple, but how it works is you you create an account and then you would pitch in half and then we match that half and then, you know, you can go on that ride. So it's also a fairly popular program and not, I'd say a recommendation for everyday trip. If you're gonna go, because taxis are still very expensive. We had someone try and book a taxi from Old Saybrook to Middletown. It was like two hundred bucks round trip, which is a plane ticket. So even half of that is still pretty pricey, but it helps take this thing out of it if you need a once in a while kind of trip to a specialist or, you know, that kind of thing. So shouldn't it be good to keep in the back of your mind? And with that, I guess we can touch on the bus stop project, kind of why we're here today. But I'm happy to give a little update on what we got going on. So so what we have going on today is currently, as Tim did a great job introducing, we have a flag stop system, which means that there really, you might see a couple of bus stops here and there. In fact, there are there are some on Lime Street, but predominantly we are a I know kind of like it's 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 a a system where you can kind of pick the bus up wherever you like, as long as the bus is coming by. We have schedules there to help you at certain time points to know when you should wait. But ultimately, it's kind of up to you to wave the bus driver down as it comes by. And if people are saying that sounds a little interesting, that's because it is. And it's typically a very rural type service and you know, it kind of makes sense for us to have a more traditional bus stop system. A lot of the biggest issues, the biggest reason we're doing this is safety. We have lots of times where people, you can wait anywhere. People will wait interesting locations. Locations are on sharp, sharp, sharp turns or on guardrail and it's not really safe for both the rider or the or the the driver. So these bus stops will allow us to have safer locations for people to wait at and also ones that will reduce confusion because a lot of times our drivers will drive by people if they aren't waving by, because you're not waving the bus driver down. We could just be some person waiting on the street for whatever reason, right? So it relieves lots of confusion, lots of frustration from our riders and our drivers. And honestly, it can be a bit of a safety issue. And for the most part, too, when you think of a bus stop system, we'll think of a bus system, we think of bus stops, right? If you're trying to find out, if you're new in town, you probably wouldn't even know there's a bus unless you see a bus stop nearby, right? So it's a bit of a, also a bit of an awareness of transit availability as well. So it's kind of some operational efficiency, some safety improvements, and then also just kind of a good advertisement that, hey, transit exists here. You don't have to use it, but it's here if you like it. And we can go to the next slide here. So what we've done is we've worked with our directors, I have the Photoshop, the photos here. This is more of an overview. We can get more in the nitty gritty if you like, but what you're looking at here is a map of the proposed stop locations out. So this is the route kind of goes as follows. I should have put the route in there, but the stops show you kind of where the route goes. The stops in orange are the stops on municipal roads. So we'd be looking to the town for some kind of approval for those stop locations. And those are the the photos I have here today. Those are the stop locations on municipal roads. And then we have thirty-six stops that are in the blue and those are on state roads. So we're looking to C T D O T for, you know, they they own those those roads. So we're looking for them for approval. But why we wanted to come here today is one for looking, you know, looking for feedback on approval municipal stops, but also we want your feedback on the other, on the state stops. Because while, yes, we're going for them for approval because it's that road, we're happy to make little tweaks and changes and hear feedback in all the stops because we want to make sure it's a system that works well for everybody. And frankly, you know, all not all the stops here are, you know, are like the perfect like sidewalk lighting and all that, because unfortunately, it's not the the route we serve. It's a rural route at times and it gets, but we try and find the safest and best locations we can along the route. We look at lighting, we look at sidewalks, we look at property, we're never, so we're for sure, none of the stops located on private property, but we try and whenever we can make it as least impactful to people as we can. And but yeah, there's no private property. It's all state or town, town right-of-way. But we still want to, you know, be cognizant of people, people's property as well. But yeah, this is sort of the the layout for the stops we have. It gets more sparse as you get more rural and gets more dense and you have Lime Street. As there's more locations in Lime Street, there's less as you go out, but we still want some decent coverage to make sure that people are able to to get around town. So yeah, we're open to any any feedback on these stops. I have some lists there. We also have several of these existing stops are actually already signed, Nine Town Transit. So if you see a Nine Town Transit stop, we're probably going to just swap it out with a our new ruralized transit plate. There are a few exceptions where we're going to change the location slightly because there's some, there's actually one on Lime Street. There's a crosswalk where there's two signs. She's not far from us, just outside the street. We want to push those back because one of the things, one of the safety concerns is around crosswalks. You want to make sure you have the stop past the the crosswalk because what can often happen is the most common crash in transit is someone getting off the bus and crossing the other side of the street. So if you have a crosswalk in front of where the bus is stopping, someone might want to walk out and right in front of the bus, right? It sounds silly, but that is actually the most common transit crash across the country. So when you have the bus stop located past, just slightly past the crosswalk, someone will have to go behind it instead of, so anyway, I'm getting the weeds here, but that's sort of the the safety things we considered when we were looking at these stops. I can go to the next slide here if that's all right. Just again, kind of, again, unfortunately, the didn't didn't quite go the way I wanted to go visually, but again, this sort of zooming in on sort of the main locations, which are is Lime Street for the town roads as well as Four Mile River, where we're the, we'll bring up where all of the the town roads stops are located. So it would be either on Lime Street, one on McCurdy and Bittersweet Lane, and then one at the country clubs, you know, one on each side of the country club, the paddle ports and the country club for workers and such. So wherever else who wants to use it. But predominantly, it's along Lime Street, which makes sense. You know, you have the schools, you have the libraries and the town hall, that kind of thing. The Art Academy, but then a few things on Four Mile as well. But it's more sparse out there. But those were the initial initial locations. I think where me and Tim are at, you know, I'm going to each one of these towns. Every town's different in how they want to approve them. So it's totally up to the towns, how you'd like to review these and approve these officially, but we wanted to introduce them and give the opportunity for feedback. So there's, you know, we're open to whatever processes the town would like to.
And when would you like approval by?
Yes, it's a good question. We'd like to get it moving. I mean, we're trying to, again, this might be a pipe, we're trying to get them installed by spring ideally, but again, it's it's up to you guys, right? Well, we'll follow whatever, whatever lead you'd like. So I guess, you know, relatively as soon as possible, but we understand everybody's busy, but we're looking to get these going. I know we are currently pursuing the state. We got permitting, for example, in our northern region of Middletown for District One. That's already been approved by the state. So we're already starting to install up there. But again, it's up at your pace, but we'd like to, you know, relatively soon if possible.
And Brendan, I think we can probably move quickly on it. I would want to look at each one of those stops.
Yeah, of course.
To due diligence and all that. Would you be the best?
Sure, absolutely.
Should I talk to Tim or?
Either one, we'll we'll talk to each other. So.
You know, a suggestion might be Ed could weigh in on it as well, since it's town road.
Sure.
Yep. But some of them are already existing for the most part and but this makes it more uniform and sensible. So.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, that's pretty much the.
So the timing in terms of the install, is that has that been determined by the contractor?
So the contractor is pretty much ready to go whenever. It's more the permitting and approval process that of course, you know, takes the most time. These guys are pretty quick.
Would they rather, could they do the town at one time frame in the city?
Exactly. So that, so if it was happening in Middletown right now is we have the state approval. So they're doing the state stops first. We're currently working on the town approval. So yeah, you can definitely, we can piecemeal it up. So if, for example, the state were to go first, we can do the state stops, but we also want, before you even started installing, also wanted to give the opportunity for any feedback before we install anywhere. But if it takes the town longer to officially approve whatever capacity, that's fine, because as long as, you know, we're okay, quote unquote, with the state stops, we can do those as well. So.
Yeah, I think there's two of these that are just I want to go out to. I do. I'm going to check them all, but there's two that I have a couple of concerns about.
Okay.
And I know that I did ask Brendan on the phone call, just basically that the stops would people have a tendency in Old Lime not to really like signs
Sure.
out near their property or their viewing.
Yep.
So if they look out their front door, they really don't want to see that. So I say, can we move it towards property lines?
Yes.
So that it's not something that's right in your view.
And that was something we I knew as well going into this is that property lines can be, oh, so you know, there's no sensibilities too. So we did, wherever possible, try and locate near property lines. And again, happy to adjust. If let's say, hey, if you could push that ten feet back, that would be a lot better. You know, we can definitely do that. So we're definitely flexible.
So what I would propose that we put Brendan's presentation and these pictures up online and ask the town people to review it and see if they have any thoughts.
Sure.
Some of them, they actually utilize your services. I know there are quite a few people who use the dial-a-ride.
Yes.
Here in town.
Yep.
Um, so I would ask that they just, we'll give them a week or two. I'd like John to be able to weigh in. So maybe in our first or second meeting in December, we would get this done.
Sure.
And then you'd be ready to go for the twenty twenty-six.
Probably also do a courtesy conversation with Historic District and much as
Yeah.
Yeah.
They might have some comments, but we could figure out when
Absolutely.
Get their meeting and.
Their meeting is the first week of December. I think it's the first Monday in December is usually their.
I'll talk to the Soundview Commission as well.
Soundview.
Sounds good. Yeah.
Okay, so I will, I will get that out. Basically, I'll share the presentation directly with them, both of them. Just so that they can weigh in.
Absolutely.
But ask for it. But ask for it before the holidays.
That sounds, I, I appreciate that, that sounds great.
Yeah.
Brendan, this may be out of your purview, but I, um. I was, and Tim worked on it as well, the Soundview Transit Hub, um, we got. Uh, place marking stone, we got a tourism sign there. Uh, and I wanted to do a little video, a little in-house brochure, online brochure promoting it.
Sure.
Uh, talked to a bus driver about doing a picture, and he's like, absolutely not. Call, call, call River, call, uh, call my boss and have him clear it, so is that something I can talk to?
I think it's something we, we, we'd be happy to do, and, uh, I think I know who you're talking about, like Frank, he's a good guy.
No, he's a great guy, really, he's, he's just like, I'm gonna get in trouble talking to my staffers.
Absolutely, I'll just say, on the opposite section, we just did a piece, I think in the Hartford Current, that talked about some of our, uh, one of our transit riders in Middletown, who's like a, you know. Good character, and he's awesome, so I think it just depends on the driver, some drivers are happy to do it. And some drivers would rather not, that's okay, but we can definitely find a driver who'd, who'd be open to.
Okay, yeah, so can I work with you on setting something up and doing those promotional videos so we can get that?
We didn't that before, we'd be happy to do that, I'm sure.
I also said that I would love to take the bus one day and do a little video on the bus to make people aware that they can do this, because. I think there are a lot of seniors, especially some who live along. This, uh, Lime Street, that may want to make use of it for certain types of things.
It is useful, I've had people that I, you know, friends from New York come up from Manhattan. And, uh, you know, they'll, they'll take the train to Sabre, and they'll hop on the bus, and I don't have to wait for them at Sabre Station.
And we have a, we have a woman who used to work in Old Line, and she just likes to come and visit. And she gets off the bus here at Town Hall, and she has a walker, and she spends the nice days, and she. Comes in here, utilizes the facilities, she goes down to the library for a little while, she just loves to spend her time on Lime Street. And then at the end of the day, she goes back and finds her way back with the bus stop and, and goes, and we see her about once a week in the summer.
Awesome, very good.
Yeah.
Another underrated usage, I think of it too, is again, if you have a car, it runs every two hours, so we're not naive that most of the time, or you're probably gonna be driving, but. If your car goes in the shop, or you need to get around, so sometimes there are certain situations where you might not think of it, you might never think, why don't you use transit, but. I always often find that some of our other zones, we'll see people use trips that they'll go to, like, the mechanic, or they'll, so sometimes it can be. It's good to have in your back pockets, and I might, I might not need it today, but maybe someday I might need it in an emergency or something, so just, it's good to have in the back of your mind, and. If people ever want to learn more, you can go to our website, Realize Transit, like, on their, their schedules, there's video, there's a whole bunch of resources there, so if people are curious, they can. Learn more that way, too.
Okay, terrific, so, um, I'll ch- share Brendan's email with you.
Excellent.
So that you can work with him on promotional video, and, um, the rest of us will all take a ride around town, and we'll check out all the stops. And, um, see if we can get any feedback from people in town. And we greatly appreciate you coming today to share this information with us, and we'll have it up on our website so that other people in town can see it as well.
Awesome, well, thank you for the opportunity.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We know it's above you. I'm all the way down here.
Oh, of course, happy to, happy to.
Okay. So we also have our presentation today from the Emergency Operations Center. Um, to Mr. Rivera's leave. Okay. He's walking your way. Oh, he's walking my way. Okay. Thank you. You have an extra for John?
Yes.
Great, thanks. So we have Mr. David Rivera, and we also have Eric Olson, who's on. The Building Committee for the Emergency Operations Center, as well as our Facilities Director for the Town, uh, at the table, so. What good news do you have for us tonight, gentlemen?
Well, just wanted to bring this administration and the upcoming administration to speed on the status of the EOC project. As you know, this has been a work in progress, both in planning and design and construction. And we're starting to wind down on the construction side, we're almost done. Uh, to date, the addition has been pretty much completed structurally wise. The carpeting and interiors are done, we're working on punch lists. Uh, items with the contractor, and also, uh, the IT and internet. And phone systems are being, uh, installed. Looking at the numbers, our original contract with Newfield was one point two nine one eight eighty. Uh, we have a remaining number of that of seventy-seven thousand and change, owner's contingency, we originally started with thirty, uh, fifty-eight thousand, one fifty. We have a remaining balance of thirty-three thousand nine eighty-six, uh, the construction budget. Total was, uh, one point three two, one seventy on your form, you can see what we used to date. And our remaining balances.
One point three five two?
One point three five two, one seventy, yes. So we have a balance still remaining portion of that. Uh, FFNE, we've only gone into sixteen thousand, that's funded by Millstone. And with the IT work in progress, we haven't even touched the ARPA IT funding. So just wanted to bring you up to speed, we're still sitting financially good, uh, on the positive side. Uh, to follow this project through completion, and in regards to the grants, we've received seven hundred and eight thousand. And we've submitted reimbursements, and we've been received, or returned to, so far, at five hundred and fifty-six thousand, six forty-six. And we submitted the remaining reimbursement of one fifty-one, three fifty-three, has gone to the state for, uh, recent minimum. We anticipate that back probably by the end of the year.
Can you just remind me, your ARPA IT funding, was that ARPA money that went through the town, or was that through another source?
It went through the town.
Okay.
The large dollar value that the town received.
Yeah.
And divvied up, one of the project applications from the municipality were the IT projects up there.
And you'll have that done.
That'll be done before December twenty-six, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. So just wanted to bring you up to speed, I'm sorry Jude wasn't here to witness this, please forward a piece to her.
We will.
And also for John sitting in the, uh, audience, being able to at least bring him up to speed on where we stand. With the, the transition of the administration.
So where do we think we're gonna be as far as a grand opening?
Looking at this aggressively, I was looking towards the end of December, or end of November. Uh, with some delays on the punch list items, with the subcontractors. I'm looking to push it through to holiday and probably the first or second week of January.
When you say there's delays from contractors or vendors, is this because of supplies, or just basically them getting back to do things?
Coming back to do the touch-ups, you know, we went through and we did a, a walkthrough for mark, uh, for corrections. You know, that was done on a Thursday, the example, the painter didn't resolve, but coming back for another week and a half. And it's, it's just a catch-catch.
Mm-hmm, because they've all moved down to bigger jobs.
Moved down to other jobs, I don't know if they're any bigger or smaller.
But. Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Other than that, I did, uh. Think that we wanted to share this with you, so, do you have anything you want to throw in here?
No, I think you got it all covered. You touched on all the points, so if you guys have any questions, go on, anyway, you see, uh.
It looks, it looks beautiful from outside, I mean, and I've been inside, it's also beautiful inside as well.
It's getting there.
It will be nice when all the wiring is attached to something.
You know, we're, we're very proud of, took a long time, the committee is very proud of it.
They should be.
The opinion is, you know, it took many, many years to get to this position. And the input and conversations that we had with the committee members, for all end-users, one way or another. Uh, they all feel very comfortable and confident of its, uh, design, build, and use.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Good question.
Mr. Wilson, you can stay right there.
You're next?
Yeah.
Um, so we're moving on to new business, um, Eric Wilson is here, he has a request for, to use some possible. Uh, town building funds for the transfer station, upper building alarm connection. Eric, I'll let you explain, but basically, something was not connected when it was supposed to be.
Correct, so over the summer, we upgraded all the fire alarm systems of all the town buildings, uh, communication, the monitoring. It was, at that time, the work was being done. The transfer station, as well as Public Works Garage, their systems were antiquated and residential in style, so. I had come to you guys in, I think, July, um, to request some additional funding to bring those up, uh, which that work you guys approved. Or finance approved, and that work was done, when they went to go online with the transfer station. Uh, and they tested the system, the upper building, so at the transfer station, we have the scale house, and then the upper building, the large metal. Uh, building, um, they couldn't get it to come online, so they dug in, you know, did some research and found the wiring. Was never reconnected to the new scale house when the scale house was built. So the additional funding to connect that all in, um, and the equipment that they would need is one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, to make that, that, that location all up to date. The, we used the town building fund, um, in July, so that's what I would, you know, request that you use, and. So that's where we're at, so I don't know if you guys have any questions.
Have you spoken to, um, Anita Mancini?
I have not spoken directly to her, um, I know the only request that I have made for that fund, um, was just what we did in July, so.
Right, we just don't know if there's anything else that's been earmarked for that fund, but I think, I think that we could find. One thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars somewhere in the budget to, um, pay for this, because it's important that. They are connected. Um, do you have any questions, Jim?
Just to clarify, so, uh, the upper building and the scale house are essentially, haven't been connected since, uh.
We don't know how long that system has been offline, um, with the old style, um. You know, all our monitoring was done through Valley Shore, um, and we didn't know, uh, at the time, until we had, we were required to switch, and so I guess. It was a good, um, good timing that we would found this out, so right now, the scale house is all covered, um. But the upper building is not, but, you know, the equipment is in there, but like I said, the wiring was never, for whatever reason, the wall might dropped and. Didn't get connected in, so.
Get her done.
Okay, so we would need, um, we, this would have to go to Board of Finance as well, so I would like to approve this tonight. So that we can take it to Board of Finance tomorrow night, for them to determine with Anita where, which funding would be taken from, so, um.
I'll make a motion to approve one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five, so.
Yeah, one, one, two, five.
Make a motion to approve, uh, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars to be appropriated for, uh, the connection of the. Uh, scale house of the transfer station to the upper building on.
And I will second that. Any further discussion, any questions, hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of approving one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for connections. From the transfer station building to the, uh, scale building to the upper building alarm system, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion passes. Okay, we are now, uh, thank you so much, and will you be online tomorrow night for Board of Finance, or would you like to come?
I could come if you would like to answer questions.
Happy to do it online as well as if you'd like.
Always a dial-in or I'll just come.
Okay, that's great, they'll just, I'm sure they'll have a question or two.
Okay, no problem.
That'd be great, thank you. Okay, and we have, uh, Paul Loether here to, as a request, also for some historical markers.
Thank you for having me tonight, uh, for the record, my name is Paul Loether, I live at ten Johnny Cake Hill Road in Old Line. I am a member of the Board of Trustees of the Old Line Historical Society. And I'm here tonight representing the society with a request, um.
If you have an extra packet, can you?
Yeah, she's got it.
No, oh, can you give one to John?
Oh.
Behind you, because he'll be.
Yeah. Um, basically, we, I'm here to request that, uh, soc- society be allowed to place historical markers, site markers. At each end, the western and the eastern end of what was historically Ben Franklin Road, the eastern end still, piece of it is still extant. Um, but, uh, it's an important location in great measure because of the fact that it was originally part of the lower post road. Is designated by Benjamin Franklin in seventeen fifty-three.
Wow.
I'll go through the package very briefly, um, it's mostly to provide you with some context, the cover sheet shows the location of Ben Franklin Road in eighteen thirty-three. Um, in two thousand and nine, it was discontinued by the town and divided up among the property owners adjacent to the sites. Um, the road is still there, in, uh, in terms of, uh, the overall right of way is still there. And recently, um, the folks who own, uh, fourteen Johnny Cake Hill cleared their portion of that site. And exposed the old road bed, and it's very visible, so, uh, to give you a sense, if you look at the map that I've shown you there. I've identified Ben Franklin Road, um, to its left is the rest of Johnny Cake Hill. Because Ben Franklin comes up off of Johnny Cake Hill, and, and further to the left of that is what's now, um, McGirtian one fifty-six. Going quickly, um, the first sheet shows a map with the current, uh, Route One coming through Old Line. Um, in the twentieth century, after nineteen twenty, twenty-eight, Route One and, uh, the post road were often synonymous through Old Line, not. Not entirely in some cases, but this shows you essentially the current route of Route One. And I'll kind of use that term, Route One versus Post Road interchangeably, since for the most part. Um, as in most Connecticut towns, Route One did follow the, the, uh. The route of, uh, the post road historically. The second map shows, uh, an orange line running through Old Line, that's the, uh, initial construction of what that would became the Connecticut Town Light. Um, from nineteen sixty-two to seventy-six, it was considered to be Route One. Um, the State Highway Department was a little bit schizophrenic about their road designations at this point, they were trying to figure out how to do this. At one point, Lime Street itself was one fifty-six, um, and, uh, Route One. Um, during this period was actually referred to as Route Fifty-One. Um, prior to, uh. During the period nineteen eleven to nineteen forty.
Sorry.
When the, uh, when the bridges were built from across the river. Um, the orange line on this map shows you the, um, route from the original bridge. Um, down Old Bridge Road and down, uh, Halls Road, the western end of Halls Road was opened at this time. Uh, specifically for the bridge, as was Old Bridge Road, so that changed the, the, the landing, if you, for Route One. And the post road in Old Line, you'll see up in the top right section, there's a little orange line as well, that was the original. Post road, um, during the early part of this period, nineteen twenties, state did a lot of highway improvements. Uh, the nineteen thirty-eight USGS map shows the green line as opposed to the orange, so at some point there, it makes sense that, that the state. Improvements were being done. Um, just a shot of the, uh, two bridges that were here historically, um, that were used for Route One and/or the post road. Um, and now we get into a little more interesting part, the next one shows an orange line from Ferry Landing to Lime Street. The green line runs from, uh, Lime Street up through East Line. Uh, that is the post road as it existed from, we think about seventeen eighty-eight to nineteen eleven. We know by nineteen eleven because of the bridges, but seventeen eighty-eight is a little conjectural, because there's no specific hard date. But we do know that in seventeen eighty-eight, Ebenezer Hazard, who was the Postmaster General. Started substituting stagecoach delivery for single rider delivery, and if you've ever been up Johnny Cake Hill Road, and imagine that as a glorified cart path. Along with Ben Franklin, getting a stagecoach up, up that road would be very difficult. Um, there are some who would also say that it may have been done to keep the post road further away from the British during the Revolutionary War, but certainly at this time. In that twenty-year period, we know there was a changeover to this route. Um, and the, the green part is essentially the modern post road.
Definitely by the time Moses Warren did the, when Moses Warren did the Lime, Limey London Turnpike. Eighteen oh two or so, it was definitely.
Yeah, and, and the turnbikes very often were established on existing post roads.
Sure.
Because they were there, but the grading on that green line, current, the current post road, especially from Sill out to East Line. Is much, much more conducive to stagecoaches than trying to get something up a rocky path, uh, up Johnny Cake Hill. Um, so we are persuaded that the, uh, original post road is on the next map shown in the red. A seventeen fifty-three designation by Benjamin Franklin. Seventeen fifty-three designation by Benjamin Franklin. Um, and, uh, if you turn the page, there's another shot of it showing it go all the way over to New London. Give you the route. Um, this is mod- using modern roadways and it's. Pretty accurate in terms of there haven't been many major changes other than small bypasses here and there. And that, uh, that line corresponds very closely, um, to the lower double line on the map. It was created, um, by Hugh Finley, who was the surveyor of the post roads. In, in the U.S. for them, not the U.S. at that point, in the, in the colonies, uh, for the king. Uh, he did a, uh, a trip in seventeen seventy-three and seventeen seventy-four, um, pretty much through most of New England. And he drew this as a sketch map, so as I say, it corresponds very, very well generally, um. With what we have outlined as the modern post road. Um, or, what would have been the modern post road had they kept it. Um, and, uh, again, this difference is in scale and the fact that he's doing this from memory. He did travel it, but he's doing it from memory, so. But it's pretty close and we think that this is the smoking gun showing the original, the original route. Um, the next page is just an excerpt from his journal. If you look down toward the bottom, there's this double asterisk. Highlights a couple of paragraphs where he talks about this map and the road. Following page shows in, outlined in red. Um, the historic right away for Ben Franklin Road. Um, and if you notice in the, uh, left-hand side, a sort of a large triangle that sticks out. That was the location of both the sixteen eighty-nine and sixteen, seventeen thirty-nine meeting houses. They were about sixty-five feet apart. But they were up in that area and there's actually a marker stone. I'll show, show you, uh, it a little bit. Uh, for the seventeen thirty-nine meeting house. We're proposing that there be markers placed at the western and the eastern ends. Um, we don't know the specific design yet. I'll give you some examples of what we're thinking of. Um, but, um, it's a little tricky because Ben Franklin on the eastern side still exists as a small piece. And then you have to, you kind of have to go off to the left. I don't think you can see it on this map, but, uh, if you look at the assessors maps on your computers, you'll see that the. That the, uh, the old road bed itself within this right away pretty much hugged that northern red line all the way through. Um, so, but explaining that will be interesting. Um, I know that our president has suggested we do some kind of a sketch map in a plaque. Uh, that would be probably more informative than trying to do it in, in, uh, in language. Um, the next one shows the approximate location that we're talking about for a marker stone plaque. On Johnny Cake Hill Road at the former junction of Ben Franklin. Um, this map shows you the right away for Ben Franklin and it was existing time that it was done. Um, the, uh. That wall that you see in the middle, uh, on the left side of the roadway actually was moved into the property line when the, uh. Property was divided, the roadway was divided between the adjacent property owners. And the, uh, meeting houses were located, um, just on the north side of the Meeting House Lane. The marker stone, uh, that I'll show you shortly is, uh, right there on the left. The next page, uh, gives you a view looking, um, toward the western end of the junction of the two roadways. Johnny Cake Hill is the paved portion, obviously. Then there's a, uh, property owners at sixteen Johnny Cakes driveway to the left. Um, is where Ben Franklin ran. Um, when they regraded this site, they didn't. They didn't change the roadway terribly much. They cleaned it up. It was full of brush, very, uh. Very lacking in any prominence in terms of being able to recognize it. But they didn't quite do it all. If you look at the second photograph on the bottom there, it shows it's like a little dam. A little one and a half foot. That's just kind of leftover stuff. And I've already asked the property owners for permission to get that removed, um, so that it's basically the roadway can come. Straight down on its original grade. There's also a pile of rocks if you look up towards just right of center. On this photograph, which, um, we hope can be removed. Those are in the middle of the actual road bed itself. The right away extended, um. Probably about an inch from the right side, much bigger than the actual roadway, which was very typical in the period. This is a second page, uh, shows you a better shot of all the rocks that are sitting in that, uh, that road bed in the right away.
Well, does that appear to you to be of recent vintage, the, the rocks that are there or?
The rocks that are there are from when they cleared the site.
Okay.
So they're leftovers. Um, they did, they did disturb the grading, but not significantly on the road bed itself. A lot of these rocks were pulled off the left side or off the right side out, out of the, in the right away, but out of the road bed. Um, and I'm not even sure the contractors aren't coming back yet, so. But, uh, we have asked to be able to move them and certainly the, uh, the other, um. Pile of slag, if you will, um, we've even offered to do that by hand if necessary to, to clear it and do it. So it doesn't further disturb the site. So page fourteen, the bottom photograph shows a rock. This is a rock which we think might be actually, uh, a rock that a plaque can be mounted on without disturbing anything further on the site. Um, again, we're asking for an approval of the concept, but I want to give you a sense of where we're headed. We didn't think it was worthwhile pursuing if, if we can't get that conceptual approval of doing this. Um, the next page, uh, shows the approximate location of the marker stone that we're talking about having, uh. Created, uh, the junction of current Ben Franklin and Mile Creek. A page beyond that shows you a, a slight distant view of that intersection. The photograph at the bottom shows you the intersection closer up with another rock. So, uh, again, this one, I'm not sure sizing wise it would work, but, um, our intention would be to do as little as possible to disturb the site. The actual part of the right away that was, um, discontinued is. If you look at the upper photographs, it's up the street, bends around the corner to the right, and then you take a left and go west. So, so that kind of marker is going to need some explanation about the rest of the roadway. And just to give you a sense of what's already in the town right away. Um, this, uh, first photograph at the top of seventeen is in a, uh, early. Um, lower post road mile marker. Um, not sure where, where it came from exactly or exactly when, probably is eighteenth century. But, uh, all of the writings that Ben Franklin did about his trip, n- never mentioned doing any installations of these or even requiring it, so. It's still a little up in the air, so, but it clearly appears to be eighteenth century in terms of its characteristics, so probably later on. And I would imagine before Ebenezer Hazard changed the route.
Sure.
So, um. Then this is, uh, below is the third meeting house site marker stone. This is technically probably not in the right away of the town anymore. When the town divided up the roadway, I think this falls within the part that went to the adjacent property owner. But it is there. Again, its origins not entirely known, but, um, its, uh, characteristics do suggest that. It probably was either eighteenth or nineteenth century, probably eighteenth because of the crudity of the design. On the next page, just to give you a sense of what we're talking about, um, having these markers look like. Um, the first shot at the top is Reverend Samuel Johnson House Site Marker, which is. Uh, kind of fronts forty-four Johnny Hill Road, Johnny Cake Hill Road. Um, and the one below is the, uh, Loving Parting First Meeting House Site Marker that's up by the golf course pool. What exactly, they'll, they will look a little, they will look a little different in terms of they'll be newer looking because that's. The nature of the beast, but we're talking about markers that are done in this kind of manner. Um, with the actual details to be provided later. And here's a sen- a sample of a new one. Um, and what they look like. So, uh, again, we would, uh, we would hope the town would be willing to give us a go ahead. Uh, with the understanding that final design, location and installation would have to come back for approval by the town.
I just have one comment and one question. The comment is. Uh, you know, I wrote about this pretty extensively. And this road or this segment of road. An old line is really critical to understanding American history, really. And it's. Probably the closest, uh, that we can find and certainly in the region and maybe along the entire route of the post road. It's the closest to what it would have looked like at that time, Franklin's time, because a lot of what was the post road has been covered over. You know, there could be railroad tracks on it, could be Route One, it could be ninety-five, it's been developed. And this is just by, you know. The happenstance of history, it's not developed, it's not paved. And it's, um, it's intact, which is terrific. I mean, it's. Lot more trees than there would have been at the time. There would have been no trees probably up on that hill, but, uh. You know, it's, so it's, it's very critical and it was more than just a highway through the colonies. It was. The lifeblood of the colonies and, and this was it, you know, the armies moved along, the communications moved along. Um, and, and of course Ben Franklin being, you know, one of our, you know, key founders. The, the personal connection there is, is pretty amazing. Um, so that's my comment and why it's very important that, that we preserve this, we mark it. And I think it should be marked, uh, the same way that the very subtly. The, the way the, the first meeting houses were marked. Because when a yahoo like me starts out in his twenties and tries to find out where things were and is. Kind of going out on his own, it's nice to have the marker so you're not just hunting and pecking and. Going out to private property and doing silly things. It's, it's, it's been done. We know where it is. Here it is. Saves people a lot of time and a lot of unnecessary hiking around.
And our goal with the marker would be to make it, uh, explanatory without having a lot of verbiage.
Right.
Ergo the map.
Right.
Um, showing Johnny Cake, Ben Franklin, Meeting House, which was originally Boggy Hole. And, um, and all the different aspects of that. This, this, this road is probably ranks pretty close in significance to, um, portions of the old Connecticut path and northeastern Connecticut. Portions of the Rochambeau Trail. I grew up as a kid in Newtown and played. Football as a kid on the part of the Rochambeau Trail, because it was a nice open space. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty significant. And, um, I think especially for Old Line in particular, this was, this was kind of the central location of. Uh, significant activity in the life of Old Line and the Revolutionary War. They were outlying farmers. But if you look at the maps, uh, from the period, um. Johnny Cake Hill went up and over to Black Hall. There was no McGirtie at that point. Going down past the, of course, that didn't come until around eighteen thirty. Um, and, uh. Uh, Ben Franklin, um, goes to Mile Creek as well, but we've walked it.
Yeah.
Takes ten minutes longer to walk around up Johnny Cake Hill than it does to come up Ben Franklin. And Boggy Hole ran all the way up north, so all the roads converged here and probably because of the meeting houses. So it's a pretty significant location in general.
So my, the question is, um, in terms of the eastern marker. Uh, since we already have Ben Franklin Road. It's town road, it's clearly marked. Um, why not have a marker up where. Historic Ben Franklin Road sort of veers off current Ben Franklin.
It, it, it presents an issue to some degree, as does the meeting house frankly, because, and that's where I think the idea of a map. Um, the location, locating at a further upward, the, the right away for Ben Franklin, uh, which was, uh, dissolved. Um. You don't get the public, I mean. Maybe it's me, but if I'm driving down Miles Creek Road and I see a marker. It may take me weeks to do it, but I'll go over and look at that.
Mrs. Kooks like.
But the chances of me going up Ben Franklin to do that without any knowledge.
Right.
Um, are, are, are kind of minimal. And it may also be that at some point we, we, we come back with a request to mark that spot with something. To indicate it, but I think if there was a map that showed, here's where you are. And here's Ben Franklin, and here's where the other Ben Franklin went off. Um, because something like that would be instructive enough so that if somebody is interested and stops to read. The marker, which we hope they do, um, that will further entice them. Knowing that they have to have permission to go on the land, but I mean, still you find it.
I think that's, you know, the, the, the ultimate goal, uh, in a hundred, hundred and fifty years when we're all gone. Uh, if the historian wants to look at this, hopefully the, the, the arrangement is still in place where the historian can come to the board selectman. Get permission to, to walk the road. And the marker will be there. It's like, ah, here's where it is. And there, and again, they're not walking into someone's backyard or, you know.
Yeah.
Doing something silly that, that's marked and.
Yeah.
It's done.
And having done it, it's a worthwhile experience. I mean, I, I have a peculiar. Interest in seventeenth and eighteenth and nineteenth century roadways in Connecticut. But it's still very instructive and it's instructive to see the changes that had occurred. Um, and, uh, there's a section in the middle. Why is it so wide? Well, it's so wide because it was really not very good land. And they basically made it wide enough so that they could find a route. And as, as you know, walking it, there looks like there was an upper section and a lower section. And again, they're very similar to the Connecticut path. You actually walk the Connecticut path, it's one point where you can go either way. And come around, so, um, but yeah, we think it's important enough and especially with the two hundred and fiftieth. I mean, the change here probably occurred, uh, from the post road where, where it was going up Lime, Lime. Probably occurred after the revolution. So this is really marking, uh, the last, the last gasp of, you know, colonial old line.
So Paul, would it be possible that you would do some type of a walk? To sort of illustrate it to those of us who live here that would, you know, so that we could go with you up that.
Sure, as long as you're willing to go slowly. Jim will tell you, I'm not a fast walker these days.
Okay, neither am I.
But, uh, yeah.
I think it would be really important and maybe, um, again, some type of a, and for those who can't walk it. To do some type of, um. Video.
Video, yeah.
Of it, just so that we can record that history and have it here because. I think it's so important, especially for the younger people in this town to learn the importance of our history.
And, and I had originally thought about doing a computer presentation and realizing that I don't have my staff anymore and I don't know how to do it. So, but I mean, I think that's something that we, it would be, it would be good to have it and it wouldn't be a, a lengthy piece.
Now, what we can add on, uh, to America Two Fifties burdens with this too, they, they could work on it. Oh, I don't know why you're not on America Two Fifty.
We should be the foot soldier. So, um, one of the things I have to do, i- i- if the town approves this in concept. Then it's worth the time and the effort to sit down. I, I, from my own background, I, there are plenty of suppliers for bronze plaques. Um, but what I have to find is somebody who could work with an existing stone. Um, to basically, uh, do some, the surface work necessary that you'd have to mount it on. And of course, we have to have, uh, some text and a design and. Many strengths, but design is not one of them. So again, I, I need to pursue that. Um, but again, without, without a town approval to do this in concept. We're just roaring at the wind.
I think I have a connection for you who can get you through, um. A design and possible connect you to the person who can mount it. But I will, I'll.
All, all help is welcome. And then again, I also have to figure out how to pay for it, so. I have, there's, there's plenty to do if, if in fact I get a go ahead at this stage.
Well, since we're not committing ourselves to doing, but committing ourselves to the concept if we. Vote today, can I make a motion to approve the concept? Uh, marking the two ends of Ben Franklin Road.
And I would second that. So it would be Jim making the motion, Martha seconding. I have no further discussion. I think it's a great idea and I think we should. As long as the neighbors are in agreement. I mean, I know it's right away. Townland, but it's always nice to ask. Just tell them what's going on.
Well, thank you all very much. Now I, I have some homework to do. Want to vote on?
Yeah, we'll vote. Uh, let's call for, um, a vote. On that motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. And we look forward to seeing you with your, uh, conceptual designs, uh, in the near future.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, and I'll get in touch with you with, uh, I'll check with my contacts and see.
Yeah, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, no problem. I will do that. All right. All right, moving on to the next thing is we have two appointments to make. One is our ADA coordinator, um. Our ADA coordinator had been Joe Karenberg, but since she has left us, um, Amy Benati has agreed to continue as the ADA coordinator. Um, and to move back into that position. She was it before and now, now she's coming back to it. So I, I'll make a motion to appoint Amy Benati as the ADA coordinator for the town of Old Line.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of. Approving Amy Benati as the ADA coordinator, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extension? Motion passes. Next one is the Historic District Commission. As we know, Carolyn, wait, um, sorry. Deanie Mallory has resigned from the Historic District Commission. Ed Pin is a alternate on the commission and the commission has asked us to appoint Ed to fulfill Deanie's. Um, appointment period for the time being. We will not appoint anyone. Put into the alternate position at this time because appointments are coming up in January. So I'll make a motion to appoint Ed. So I'll make a motion to appoint Ed Pin to a full-time position on the Historic District Commission, filling the position that Deanie Mallory had and filling out her term.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those approving that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any? Opposed, sorry, thank you. Just kept thinking of disapproval. Um, opposed, none, extensions, none, motion passes. Okay, next up is our holiday schedule for twenty twenty-six. We try to get this out in January just because there are people who like to know when our holidays are so that if they want to travel and they start to make travel arrangements. Um, so we try to give them a heads up and we think that twenty twenty-six is far along, but it's really not. So um, Jim, you've had an opportunity. I think I sent this to you before, so. Would you like to make a motion that these are the approved um holidays for twenty twenty-six in town hall?
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule of holidays for twenty twenty-six.
I will second. And uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Okay, um, we have anticipated action by the Board of Selectmen on the matter discussed in executive session. So we have to move this to the Board of Finance, basically. It is still um a draft document and they would, but we have to move it forward to them. So if you would like to make a motion of the draft settlement agreement.
I'll make a motion to move the draft settlement agreement to the Board of Finance.
I will second that. And any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those approval, approving the draft settlement agreement to be moved to the Board of Finance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? None, motion passes. Next one is information only. I may have given John my only copy. Did I give it to you, John? I did. Wait a minute. I know, I had, no, I had, I had a copy. I know I made a copy for Jim. Wait a minute, it's underneath something. Hold on, it's a lot of paperwork here. So as you know, we have the Soundview Area B Sewer Project for the town of Old Lime's WPCA. And we know that we have requested things to be done before we went to referendum. We asked for the sewer ordinance to be completed. We also asked for the cost sharing agreement to be done. And we asked for some updated numbers. So we are not voting on any of this tonight. We are not moving anything to referendum tonight. This is just a sharing of information. However, what we would like to do is have a special Board of Selectmen meeting now on the twenty-fourth. And should, uh, November twenty-fourth, which is next uh Monday. And should we decide at that meeting to move this to referendum, we're basically moving it to the Board of Finance who moves it to referendum. So we would have a scheduled special meeting of the Board of Finance also on the twenty-fourth so that they can take this motion and move it forward. And then we would follow the other dates except for the date TBD that's on the list. And that is basically because our uh bond a- agent would tell us when the informational mailer would be sent to all residents. When that would go out and he would be preparing that. Um, and you still know there's some work to be done in the next week. I'm not sure where we'll be, but I hope that next week, Monday, John, Jim and I can have a very serious discussion um about this subject and John and Jim will forward all the information to you during the week, if anything updated that comes along. Um, and John, I'll share with you the sewer ordinance draft and that is currently in um our hands as well as some comments by Ledlight Health District of some things to consider that were not put in the original draft. Um, that they would like us to consider, so we'll do that.
And I'll forward you our cost sharing agreement, which is nearly completed.
Nearly.
It would have been approved last year, demand.
So we are still working on that. And now we're moving on to old business. And Mark Hastings, you get the award, you're gonna get a special award at the town meeting, I swear, for the patients. As you come and you wait for us and we really appreciate that. So as people know, for those of you who are online, et cetera, um Mark had come to us from the Rogers Lake Association for the proposal of adding a dock, and we're not adding a dock, but I would say extending a dock that, an existing dock that is currently used for the chase boats. If you have an extra, if you can give it to Jim, uh, John, that would be great. We'd be extending the dock currently used for the chase boats for the rowing association um, to include our, enough room for our patrol boat for Rogers Lake. So it would be housed there for the seas, the summer season. Um, and this would allow us not to be uh leasing a dock from someone on the lake. It would also provide parking, uh, more available parking for our patrol boat.
Personnel.
Personnel and also allow them to use the facilities at Rock, at Haynes Park if they need to go to the bathroom. So all of these are positives. Um, I think that um Mark and the uh Rogers Lake Authority has done a wonderful job of not only working with the town, but also with Regional School District Eighteen to talk about funding for this. Lime would also be involved. Um, so Mark, I'm gonna let you take it away and uh tell us about all the good things that have happened.
Um.
Oh, and by the way, this has also been approved um by the Park and Rec Committee.
Correct. Um, since we last talked, um, we have met with Parks and Rec. Um, we have, uh, I have met or talked over the phone with um David Lath Lamb who is, was the selectman, still is for another day.
Another twelve hours.
Twelve hours. Um, and he is comfortable with us using part of our current budget, which they've approved um, to fund this project. Um, we have talked with uh council as to what uh leitorial rights may exist by abiding property holders and the answer is basically as long as we don't interfere with their enjoyment of their um their shore, there isn't an issue. And we don't need approval from them. We have written them a letter, which unfortunately they haven't received it yet because we sent it certified.
It still hasn't been.
Still hasn't been picked up, so I'm just gonna send a regular letter. Uh, we did email them as well and haven't had a response to that.
Might be better if we just drop, maybe just try dropping by.
I'm trying to, I drive by there a lot. I can't figure out if anybody's living in the house yet or not, because there's still a part of it that's under construction, but I guess I could try that.
I can try to make a phone call for you tomorrow.
That would be nice.
See if I can get an answer for you. I'll get an answer where the best, how the best way to get it to them would be.
Um, so and I have confirmed that these, the prices that I had, that we had proposed last October is still in effect and um you know, acceptable to the supplier. We did check into an alternative dock structure, um, or supplier. And that cost would have been almost double of what the current that we're, that we are looking to do. And uh, one benefit is it's the same type of system um, to the other docks at the uh, the lake are. So what I would, what we're questing is um, the approval to go forward with this. Um, the funding would come as Martha said, um, part from the school district RSD eighteen. And then out of the current budget of Rogers Lake Authority, I've identified um three elements that I believe we will have excess funds available for, the total five thousand dollars. Our projected cost of this, our share is four thousand three sixty-two. Um, the docking fee is self-explanatory why we have a balance there. Uh, the miscellaneous number was, this was anticipation of issues related to the dam and deep. And those have seemed to those aren't materializing at this point in time. And um we had talked about getting two newsletters out, which is why they were budgeted higher. Um, it looks like we're only gonna do one because we're working on a special project on Hydrella, which would be come in the next budget year.
And you could also do a um digital newsletter if you want to. And get the word out that way, if you wanted to, because um, I know the senior center is going to a digital newsletter now.
Really?
They are, because the postage is killing them.
Interesting. I'd be, be very interested in hearing that, because we've got a number of things we'd like to do.
I think it's going up in um December is the first issue.
Okay.
So I will check with Stephanie, but yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Mark, what I'm not seeing is labor or installation costs.
Um, we have a bunch of crew people that can lift these up and put them in.
So that's, that's a zero.
It's a zero.
It's Public Works too. So every year, Public Works goes down and takes the docks out uh on, and puts them up on land.
Right.
You think that's where we store them for most of the winter in Haynes Park. And then they go back. And there's some abutments there that they anchor them to. Um, so this would just be in that realm.
Right.
Um, so this would also go to Board of Finance tomorrow night um for approval. They've already been sent um the plans. I didn't have the updated numbers because I know we had moved a few things around, so I told them.
I'll send this to you. I have sent it to Anita just so she can have the numbers.
Yep. And so if you want to send it ahead, we can send it to them uh ahead of time and then they'll have it. I, but I said that you'd be there or you can, again.
I will be there, that's fine.
Okay. Um, it should be a shorter look and may not want to come right away, but anytime after seven.
Okay.
All right, so we just need um approval to send this to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, Board of Finance, sorry, from the Board of Selectmen. And um
I'll make a motion to send the request for a new dock launch at Rogers Lake uh to the Board of Finance.
And I will second. And any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of moving the Rogers Lake Dock Proposal to, uh, for funding to the Board of Finance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. I know that on old business, I had the Deep Climate Resilience Fund application, but I haven't had time to really look at it again, so. I'll send that also to you, Sean. It's an opportunity that we might want to look at for a fun, another funding opportunity.
Thank you.
And I'll send that and we can address that in um December. And then we can get to work on granting. Thank you, Mark, for coming. So hearing no other business, I think we need a motion to adjourn at six fifty-six.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, no opposed, no abstentions, motion passes. We are out of session. Thank you very much for all of you for coming.